Good morning, everybody. This is the time and place set of zoning board of adjustment for the city of Pittsburgh hearings on August 21st, 2025. And the first case of the morning is zone case 105 of 2025 for 5127 Holmes Street. And our applicant should be online.
Yeah, Ilnar A. I just invited you to join as a panelist. All right, we've got the applicant.
Okay. We're, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing the applicant here.
They are.
Are they listed in the attendees?
Yeah, Ilnar, you can unmute.
Hi, yes, hi, good morning. Sorry, I thought we were discussing different cases, but 4624 Penn Avenue, right?
Yes, correct.
Sorry, I called the wrong case. You're absolutely right. 4624 Penn Avenue.
Yes, good morning.
And are you the only person who is going to be participating in the hearing this morning?
Correct, yes.
And do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board this morning will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Daniel, could you read the case in, please?
This is case 97 of 2025 for 4624 Penn Avenue. The application's for the use of a front yard parking pad and they're requesting a variance from section 912.04.l.3. Front yard parking is prohibited.
All right, so we have your materials and as Mr. Shepke indicated, the reason we're here is because front yard parking is not permitted. So for us to grant an approval, we would have to understand there's something unique about this parcel that makes it different from every other parcel. So that front yard parking on your property is appropriate where it may not be everywhere else. So. Go ahead.
Yes, so I guess a bit of a background about 4624 Penn Avenue. I've been an owner of it for the last year and a half. And when I purchased it, it had two parking spots already on the lot. Based on the information that we found online, it looks like the parking pad existed for decades. And it has always been like that. So at this point, I was instructed to apply for the dummy permits to ensure that the parking pad meets the parking requirement by the, by, by dummy, which it did. So I've successfully obtained the permit for the curb cut. And additionally, I've already presented the case to Bloomfield Development Corporation, which supported the property having two parking spots in front of the property. So at this point, I'm looking for an approval from, from the zoning board to, to have, to continue have, having the, the parking spots in front of the property.
Well, we appreciate that they're pre-existing and that you have the other approvals, but we have to have an understanding about what is unique about this parcel. And it sounds like the parking pad has been there for some time, whether legal or illegal. But can you tell us a little bit, I mean, all we're seeing is a parking pad. Can you tell us a little bit about the property and the surrounding neighborhood?
Absolutely. So the property is located on, on Penn Avenue. It is, it currently has an LNC zoning, which permits a variety of uses. Currently, the property is being used as a, as a duplex, so it has two units in, 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 in the property. Hence, there are two parking spots on the, on the parking pad.
Well, it, it looks like the, the structure on the par, do you have any other pictures that you could show us? I mean, it, it looks like the, the residential structure is set back from the property line, whereas the, the neighboring parcels, the structure goes up to the Penn Avenue property line. Is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Is yours the only parcel on that street where you have that configuration with the, the structure going to Penn Avenue and you, you have a parking pad that goes towards Penn Avenue?
I, I might be the first person, I guess legally obtaining it. I know there are properties on Penn Avenue, and if you drive, that's, that's strange. There are vehicles being parked on the, on, on the front parking pad, but unfortunately, I'm not able to see whether those are legal parking pads or not.
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at the, your immediate neighbors from this photo at least look like the structures extend to the front parking, I mean, front property line.
Correct. Yes, yes, yes.
Is, is the front of your duplex structure on the way at the rear, or is the front facing?
The front is, it's, it's off Penn, Penn Avenue.
Okay.
Yeah. So based on this, I guess, aerial screenshot from Google Maps, it's, it's from the north. I guess from the, from the top side of the picture, that's where the vehicles would park in, in that parking pad.
What, where is this on Penn? I mean, I know you said it's an LNC district, but it's.
It's, you, you, you know, the children's hospital, and then there's a big cemetery. So it's across the cemetery.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it, it is an LNC, so there are restaurants and other uses up there.
Yes, 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 correct. So I mean, you have a a lot of commercial and, and restaurants use just nearby.
I'm, I'm just curious, are these, you said there are two parking spaces, but are they, is it a tandem situation where one car pulls and then another car pulls behind it, or are they side by side?
They're side by side.
And is there any way of improving the appearance of it from the street? So it, because one of the reasons we don't allow front yard parking is streetscape. Is there, are, are there any improvements or landscaping that would fit along with the driveway that would make it look less like just two parking pads in the front of the property?
So besides, and Daniel, if you could kindly scroll the, the picture up. So this is how it looks like. There is a house structure, then there is, I guess, a fenced yard in front, so there is some grass as well. And then there, there's obviously pad in the front. Again, if there's something of me that's required in terms of like making it look better than it really, than what it is right now, I'm absolutely open to it. I'm just not sure. But how else can I improve it? I know that my property is, I mean, if you drive along Penn Avenue, I think my property would actually look a lot better compared to, well, a lot, a lot of the properties in the neighborhood. I mean, it's fresh, that, that, it has newer siding as well, so it's, it, it does look good.
But I have another question, sorry. How deep into the lot can the cars pull? So there, clearly, if you got a dummy approval, they wouldn't be hanging off into the public right of way, but how far in can they go?
That, that's right. So Daniel, if possible, if you can scroll up the presentation a little, there is actually an official site map. So the, the parking spots are 19, sorry, nine by 19, which is the requirement by dummy. So if, if the car is parked in the parking pad, there is no part of the car that's sticking on this, on the sidewalk.
I was just wondering if they could be pulled closer to the house so they weren't sitting straight into the front yard. That's, that was my question. Oh, I see that you, you have the, the fence there.
Yes, exactly, exactly. Yeah.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. Mr. Richardson or Ms. Burton Falk, any other questions of this applicant?
No questions.
No additional questions, Madam Chair.
Okay. Um, is there anybody attending who might like to comment with respect to this application? Looking at the attendees list, is there anybody raising their hands? The answer is no. Okay, all right. Thank you. We will accept the exhibits as part of the record and we will issue a decision within the time permitted under the code.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Right. Okay. The next case of the morning is zone case 111 of 2025 for 901 North St. Clair Street. And the applicants are Jeff Danino and, Danino and Veronica Zabo.
I just promoted Veronica Zabo to panelist.
Do we have Jeff?
I do not see him in the attendee list, but maybe he's with Veronica.
Veronica, could you unmute yourself? Hello, Veronica, so we can hear you. Veronica, are you with us? We can't hear you. Oh, dear.
She declined being per. She must have known what it was gonna do.
Veronica, if, if you would like to participate in this hearing, we need to have you accept as being a panelist.
She's on the panelist list and she's unmuted. Maybe she's just having trouble with her microphone. Veronica, if you want to call in, that, that's an option and it might be easier to.
We're just near, wait, there's somebody raising their hands and the, there's Liz, oh, the court reporter. Hello, court reporter.
Hello, I'm so sorry. My sheet said nine, but for some reason I kept thinking 9:30 until the office called me.
Well, we have, thank you, we're glad you're here. We're trying to have the hearing on zone case 111 of 2025. We do, we are, we have a YouTube recording, so we have only had one hearing, so that would be to catch up on.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, Veronica, are you with us? Can you? We can't hear you if, if you're talking, she's not even trying to talk here. Veronica? She's in a car, wait.
Veronica, can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
I can hear you now, yes. As soon as I joined the meeting, my sound went off. This is, I can hear you now, yes.
Okay. Oh, are you expecting Jeff to join you? Because we haven't seen him yet.
Um, I am, yes, actually, he's, yes, he is. Let me call him. He.
Five minutes passed. The, the hearing was scheduled for 9:10, so. So for the court reporter, you can catch up now because we're, we're, we're waiting for our next applicant here. Oh, well.
He's talking, I think, to him. Unless she's trying to talk to us.
Veronica, are you still talking to Jeff? Wait, you're on mute for us. We can't hear you.
He's talking.
We can't hear you.
I just spoke with him and he thought it was 9:30, so he's, he's joining us.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I apologize.
It's scheduled for 9:10.
Yes, I know, yes. In the meantime, if you have any questions for me, I am.
We're gonna, we're gonna start the hearing when we have everybody who's going to participate, so. Thank you. And is, is it just gonna be you and Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. You're not driving, are you?
I'm in, I'm pulled over.
Okay, thank you. There we have.
Drop off.
We have Jeff Danino. If we can promote him as a panelist, then we can get started. All right. Jeff, are you with us? If you could unmute, please.
I just, can you hear me now?
We can, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna ask Veronica and Jeff, do each of you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I, I do.
I do, yes.
Thank you. And now Daniel's gonna read the case in.
This is zone case 111 of 2025 for 901 North St. Clair. The application is to change the use of a structure from a convenience store to an office. And they're requesting a special exception pursuant to section 921.02.a.4 to allow the change of a non-conforming use from grocery store limited to office limited.
All right, so we have your materials up. Who is going to start the presentation?
Jeff.
Okay, yes, I will start the presentation, so.
And remember, we have a court reporter, so if you could speak up, we, we need to, we need, all of us need to hear you.
Okay, is this better?
It is, thank you.
Okay, so the, the building is an existing commercial building in the Highland Park neighborhood. It was built around 1900 or so and has always been a commercial building. Most recently, it was occupied as a grocery store that also, that sort of takeout food. And the building has, the commercial portion of the building has been completely renovated into two retail bays. And offered, you know, for lease. I am going to, I was the architect for the renovation. And now I'm applying to use one of the bays as my office space.
Okay, so this is, it's a shared, and again.
Sure, can we go to the next slide, please?
Sure. Oh, there we go.
Okay, so that's the building, the, the larger picture is the, the building as it is now.
So it's the corner of North St. Clair and what?
Jackson Street, yes.
Okay. And you said that the, its existence as a commercial structure has gone back to when it was probably a corner grocery store or something like that?
We, we have, there have been multiple tenants, but it looks like it may have been a pharmacy at one time, but yes, it was, it, it was constructed as a commercial.
And, but the proposal now is to turn it from the convenience store use to an office use? And is there a separate use in the other bay that you're applying for at the same time?
We are not. That, that space remains leased.
Okay, so it's.
We're not changing the occupancy for that space.
All right, so are, are you saying that a, a convenience store could still go into that? So you're just proposing to change the use of one bay?
That's correct.
Okay. And so the, the kinds of things that we look at for a change of a non-conforming use, we, we want to have some sort of assurance that the new use would be consistent or less, it would, would have less of an impact than the current use. So with the convenience store use, there would be hours of operation, number of employees, people coming in and out where they would park. Can you explain a little bit about how you anticipate the office use would work?
Sure, so I'm an, I'm an architect and this would be my office. Currently have one employee. It would be a primary workspace and meeting space. There's very little traffic. There might be one or two visitors per day for a meeting or to.
And you, is, I miss, is there any onsite parking or does the structure extend to all of the property lines?
There is a garage in the back, but that's not available for parking. That's used by the building as storage.
Okay, but just generally, I'm assuming that as an architect with clients coming in to visit, you could kind of control who's there when. So in terms of parking, you wouldn't have the same in and out kind of traffic that you would for a convenience store?
That is correct.
Okay. And what, what is the area of your space?
It's about 800 square feet.
Okay.
Could you go to the next slide, please? So that's, that would be, it's the left-hand bay looking at the building and that is the space.
Okay. Okay, and is the other bay would have a comparable space?
Yes, nearly the same size.
Okay. And you said that that's still, whatever use might go in there is still unidentified?
That's correct.
Okay. And just because we, we can't sort of give a blanket approval to whatever might go into that space because we don't know what the impact of it might be, your request here is just limited to the one bay?
Right, so it's identified on the drawings as space A.
Okay.
And that was on the renovation drawings. It's consistent with the, the building renovation drawings.
Okay. Hours of operation, I'm assuming you, do you, do you know what the convenience store hours were as compared to what you're proposing?
It's listed on their current occupancy permit. It was, it was, it was actually very well defined. It was from like 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM and 5:00 PM on Sundays.
Okay. And you, you plan to be there when you need to be there, but
Yes.
you wouldn't have the space open to the general public?
It is not open to the general public, no.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Additional questions, Madam Chair.
For Richardson. Okay. Do we have anybody attending? I, I was gonna say, Ms. Zabo, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
No, thank you.
Okay, and I'm, I'm turning to the list of attendees. Is there anybody attending who would like to comment with respect to the application for 901 North St. Clair Street? I am seeing no hands raised. So, um, thank you for presenting the exhibit, the, your presentation here, and we will accept the exhibits as part of the record and we will issue a decision within the time permitted under the code.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here this morning.
And thank you for your patience.
No, no worries.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. Now, we're on to the next case of the morning, which is zone case 105 of 2025 for 5127 Holmes Street. And you're in the room? Is this your case? All right. Is it Lisa Javornik? Is there anybody else? Are you gonna testify as well? If you, if you think you might say something, come on up to the, we do need to have you on the mic over here. So for the court reporters, but, well, all I want you to do is if you think you might say something, I want you to swear in now. That's all, as opposed to stopping in the middle. Thank you. All right, so.
Oh, can I say something really quick? It's 137 Holmes Street.
It says 5127 Holmes Street.
Sorry, 5137 is the actual correct ad.
Okay, we'll make sure we.
Thank you.
Thank you, but let's start by, do each of you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Daniel, could you read the case in, please?
This is case 105 of 2025 for 5137 Holmes Street. The application is for the change of use to recreation and entertainment indoor limited and office limited. They're requesting a special exception pursuant to section 921.02.a.4 to allow the change of the non-conforming use from a photography studio to the office and indoor recreation for a yoga studio.
All right. Can I also say one more thing? I don't wanna change it. I called and told them and they changed the thing for me. I don't wanna change it from photography studio. I wanna keep my photography studio.
Well, let's, first of all, you need to talk on the mic.
Okay.
And we're gonna go through your materials. So just so we understand, you're proposing to include an additional use in the space that's there now?
Correct.
Okay, so we're, we're still gonna consider it under the part of the code that is a, you're, you're altering the non-conforming use that's already there, even if you're not changing from one to another.
Correct.
So you're altering what's there.
Correct.
Just as we had with the last case, what we're trying to understand is if you are making changes to what's permitted now, how are the changes that you're proposing, how might they impact the neighborhood? So if, for instance, you were saying, I have a photography story, studio, and now I want to have gallery shows with raves that last until four in the morning, we would have to consider that. If you want to add an additional aspect to the photography studio that's sort of consistent with that use, we'll consider that. But we have to understand what alterations you're proposing.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay. So we have your materials up. It's up to you to walk us through and explain where the property is and what's going on.
So this is a map. The, in orange, there are the properties that I own around it.
And this is Upper Lawrenceville?
Yes.
Off of?
This is between 52nd and Stanton Avenue.
Okay. And so you own these several parcels and where is the?
Building is the big, big one there and the big one. It's 40 by 100, yeah.
You've been before us before, is.
Uh huh.
Okay. Okay.
I've done five properties in the neighborhood, I've been there twenty, over twenty-five years.
So what, how is it, and we can look back at the past decisions for the property, but where are you, what is it that you're proposing to change, or what, what are you proposing to add?
Well, I, I, I recently, I, I ran it, see, I, I, I'd like to, my photography studio was my main thing in there all those years, and now since I'm sixty-four, I would like to add some additional situations that are low impact. I'm not asking to have ragers till four, I'm just asking to add like offices limited. So I would be able to possibly rent, let's say, to a startup tech company or something, keep it low-key, you know, not, not, not a major big company or anything. And or currently, I was renting to um, puppies and yoga, and that's how this all came up. So that's where the recreation comes in.
Well, you, you're, you're, you're kind of confusing me, because all we're looking at are the parcels that you own. Where are the uses located? Is it in all of the parcels, some of the parcels, one of the?
A part of it, I do have a picture um, with the, the puppies and yoga in there. Um, and it's, it's twenty people a class. I figured this would be as low as impact as possible. And literally, I've been up there and I did add pictures of how much parking is available while they're in session for each four classes.
Where, where are they?
Is, is the yoga happening in the space that your photography studio occupies?
But not the whole space, it's a big space.
They don't have a separate space, you're proposing to do yoga in what is now a photography studio?
Correct, part of it, a portion of it.
Okay, so is, is the building that we're talking about, the red brick building that's in the photo? Okay, and is, and what part of that building is being used for your photography studio?
Uh, about, it's about probably maybe half of the first floor or, or third of the first floor. And fifteen hundred square feet or so, eighteen hundred square feet.
And how much of the, wha- what's part of the space would you want to have with the yoga studio?
Just in the front, front area, but see, they're only there two days a week and then they're gone. And then, then I operate my photo studio in the, in there, you know what I mean?
Let's, so can you remind us a little bit about the history of the building? It looks like it's a two-story structure that, was it a school or a church or?
Well, I would love to do that, this was a, a, a historical building, established in the late eighteen hundreds. It was a men's club, they had a bar, a forty-foot bar in the basement, and upstairs they had a choir that sang. Then over the years, this has been like this for a hundred years, over the years, um, they had, they ended up having weddings and social events, and this was, this was a party place. So when I purchased it, which it was left for dead, I mean, bad, and I renovated it, I came to the city and I zoned it for my commercial photography studio. It's commercial photography studio, and the u- the use is still listed as amusement lodge as to what it was. So um, I've been doing my photography in there all these years, and go ahead.
It's great, I mean, that, like I said, that helps us with the historical context. Like I said, what we're trying to understand is how you're trying to, the additional uses that you're proposing. So photography store, studio, the yoga two times a week, and then your, is it the second floor that you're thinking maybe you could um, lease as office space?
I have a loft in there as well, it's about a thousand square foot loft, and that is where I could probably rent um, office space.
Okay. And so again, it, it's up to us to sort of think about the uses that you're proposing in the R one residential neighborhood. And it sounds like, i- it, it's helpful to have that history of what had been there. Um, and it looked like you have a number of parking spaces on the site. So um, if you were to have office space on the upper floors, um, do you have any sense of like, like a hundred employees?
Nah, a handful, yeah.
Okay.
Like, you know, three or four, like, I'm gonna keep it low-key, like, I don't like this, this conflict stuff, I mean, I'll keep it.
It's in conflict, this is just, we're just trying to understand what you're proposing.
Sorry.
Um, okay, so, and, and how many, how many parking spaces are on the site?
There's um, I can park six cars, I mean, ten cars, because I have a lower parking lot as well, as you could see on that top part. And then inside the garage there, I could actually park cars if need be.
How many spots total do you think?
I'm gonna say I have at least twelve.
Okay. And I'm assuming that um, with the um, yoga use, there's sufficient parking for people who are coming for that?
Um, yes.
I mean, are they parking onsite when they're there?
I encourage people to park on, you know, disperse a little bit, Stanton or Fifty Second. And then they also Uber, and people don't come to this alone, and it's only twenty people a class, because there's seven puppies or so, six or seven, so they don't have more than twenty people. So I park as many cars as I can off, off-site, and then people draw, often honestly, I drop their three kids off, like teenagers, or they come, I've seen families come in five cars, so there is, or one car, five people, one car. It is not that many cars, it is probably at best six cars.
And, and again, we're, again, we're just trying to understand, like, if your neighbors said, you know, gosh darn it, every time they have a yoga class, I can't park anywhere near my house, that's the kind of thing that we're trying to understand.
Right, right.
Okay.
I, I also enclosed pictures of during each session of how much parking is available on my street.
Let's, let's.
Do you have any pictures of the puppies?
Yeah, I, I did take some pictures, I did take some pictures of the inside that are up there somewhere.
Heard of yoga with goats?
Yeah.
Cats?
These puppies, they're cute.
These would be the best.
And I know I need to keep on cue, but most of my neighbors are pretty excited about it. They come over and they look at the puppies, they take classes.
Let's, could you, can we scroll through the pictures?
Yeah, let's see the pictures. And you can even see from random pictures, there is like always parking around my property.
And this is, this is from the, we're seeing the front of the um, property on Home Street, where's?
That's, and then you've got the back there down towards the bottom, there's two, there's two entrances in it, and, and see right there?
What is, what, what is it backing onto, is that?
I'm sorry?
What's the name?
Oh, that's Kent, Kent, Kent.
But it's a way.
Kent Way.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
I just put this stuff in there, I didn't know, this is.
Now, that's helpful for us to understand. And do, I think Ms. Burton-Palk asked, or I asked somewhere along the line, the, what's the area? The total area on the um, top floors where, that you might use for an office?
It's four, it's uh, oh, the, the loft?
Uh huh.
That's about a thousand square feet.
Okay. Okay.
And this is where I took pictures of each class, how much ample parking there is on Home Street, while class was in session. While I had my six cars parked.
The classes are during the day?
Yes, they're between nine and four.
Building looks to be roughly twenty thousand square feet interior, correct?
No, the whole entire building is nine thousand square feet, it's four thousand square feet a floor.
Okay.
And then the
There you go, try to.
The, there you go, I got some in the back, I got more on my phone, but I gotta stick to the subject here.
Now, let's, let's. Hear me.
And I just went on about myself, I know you don't want to hear about me, but I went on about my.
Well, we'll, we'll take it as part of the record.
And this is letters from my neighbors around me. I mean, I have my neighbors in for community parties and community of, not parties, but.
Did you, is this something that you talked about with um, any of the community groups in Lawrenceville?
Yes, Lawrenceville Corporation and United, I sent them all of this. And in fact, Lawrenceville Corporation had their year in meeting, or their year in party.
Thing you didn't, we just.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm a big part of, that I donated to them for years.
Okay.
And I've, I'm, I'm, I totally know David, and, and, and I know the people, they, they had their, their, whatever it is, for free, free, I offer it to people for free for stuff like that. I'm a community girl, I live right down the street in one of my renovations.
Not saying that you're not.
I live across the street.
Don't make this adversarial, it's not, it's okay. All right.
I'm a good person!
Again.
I'm friendly.
Adversarial, yes.
I know, I got.
There's just one neighbor that's. Well, we're going to um, did you have any other question? Do you have any other questions?
No additional questions, Madam.
All right. Do we have anybody, hang on, it, again, unless you're gonna testify, we need to turn to um, the list of people who are attending online to see if there's anybody who would like to comment with respect to the application at fifty-one thirty-seven Home Street. We'll make sure we make that correction. Does anybody have their hand raised who would like to comment with respect to this application? I am not seeing any hands raised, so we are going to accept all of the exhibits as part of the record, and we will issue a decision when, um, within the time that the code permits, okay?
Have a great day.
All right. Uh, we do have thirty-five, forty-five days under the code to issue a decision, so we, we try to be faster than that. All right, thank you for coming in, we like seeing people in person, it's great. Okay. Uh, the next case of the morning is uh, Zone Case one oh eight of twenty twenty-five for eleven eleven Middle Street. Oh, this one is being rescheduled to um, September fourth at nine twenty. So if you were here with any questions about eleven eleven Middle Street, come back on September fourth. Which puts us right back to time, how about that? Uh, all right. The next case of the morning is um, Zone Case ninety-five of twenty twenty-five for thirty-five fifty-nine Bigelow Boulevard. We have the applicant identified as James Dayhen, Dan? You're, uh, you're being promoted to panelist, James? So look for, note that says, accept as panelist. There we go.
Hello?
I have a sign. Hi, how are you? Are you the only person who is going to be um, testifying in this matter?
Yes.
And do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Daniel, could you read the case in, please?
This is case ninety-five of twenty twenty-five for three five five nine Bigelow Boulevard. The application is for a roof sign or statue, and they're requesting a variance from section nine nineteen dot O one dot E, which prohibits roof-mounted signage.
All right. Um, as I understand it, the um, structure slash sign is already in place, so you're requesting uh, a variance is, as a matter of forgiveness as opposed to permission, which we're not particularly fond of. And um, I will say, roof signs are prohibited, so what is unique about this property, not about your personal interests or the interests of the company? What is unique about the property that makes signage on the roof necessary?
Yes, I, I think if you, if you look at the first image in the top right, you can see that the top down, there's um, the building is essentially all like a roof. So the um, the area on the right side where you can enter from Bigelow to, to drive around the property, that is actually the roof for the level below that, uh, making it like also like not a, available for um, you know, something like that, that, that type of, or any type of signage in that way. We've also had just a um, I think part of the unique layout.
Can you, can you explain how it is that the sign was installed without any approvals, without seeking any approvals?
Yeah, that's just a mistake, I, I, I don't know how to explain it other than, uh, we didn't realize that the, I, I didn't realize that was going to be an issue, we, we hired a, a sign company that manufactured and installed it and asked them about, a- a- asked them what the process was, it's just genuinely a mistake.
Well, the, the, the signage that's on the side of the building, um, I don't know if the area of it complies with the code, but you managed to have signage on the side of the building. And again, I'm going back to roof signs aren't permitted, so understanding that you want to have this particular roof sign and this particular roof, but why, why this building, what makes it different than any building next to it that if you wanted to have a roof structure, the only place would be to put it would be on the roof? I mean, I don't know how that makes the property unique.
I, I, I guess there's, there's not a, uh, there are very limited locations to put any sort of signage to indicate like what, where the property is, um, when someone's identifying which the entrances, the, you know, where, where Megacat's office um, is included, because we can't use the, we couldn't put something on the ground in this area either, that, there's not like a um, a place that is safe or available because of the nature of the, this area you drive on, the asphalt is also the roof for the floor below it.
You're saying you've got a cat on the hot tin roof, but again, sorry. Uh, but you've managed to put signage that identifies the business on the side of the building. So I'm, I, I, I understand that there is a desire to have more identifying signage, and there might not be space for that, but you have managed to put compliant signage on, so why do you need to have the sign on the roof?
You know, we, we just had a number of, of times now where we have people unable to figure out where we are, um, what the property is, I think part of it is the, the shape of the building and how hard it is to kind of, you know, to go around Bigelow with the um, the midway barrier, you know, just trying to make it more visible and obvious, like, we kind of incrementally put the, the signs with the letters and then the, the logo hoping, and then, you know, it seemed like the, the effort towards the statue was another recommendation from the signage company on, you know, it's a little hard for people to figure out where we are, drop-offs, clients, team members, any of those, those similar things, it's a.
But again, I mean, part of our dilemma is that um, you've, you or the sign company have installed the signage that's not permitted, and um, now you're coming back to us and looking for approval, and what's to stop any of the neighboring parcels from saying, well, they got away with it, why shouldn't we? And again, we're, we're, our responsibility is to enforce the requirements of the code. So that's why we, we want to understand what's unique about this property as opposed to a neighboring property. Like, why do you need roof signage? I mean, again, I understand you want need, you want to have it for your business, but why is it? What's so special about this parcel?
I, I, I think another way to look at it is, I think that we're just like uniquely identified by the iconography, and we wanted a way that people could see it, find it, locate it more simply and reliably. It's, it's, it's not that there's a a- a- anything explicit as far as, you know, the type of signage or the signage choice, it's, it's that, in this, where the building is, now the building is located, um, there's, there's not many places that it can go. It's, it's like the, the entire asphalt area that surrounds the property is a, is a roof, and then the um, the, the kind of two-sided instance of this kind of almost uh, angular shape, depending on which direction you're going, just makes it uniquely challenging for people to find it still. Um, and, and it, it's just been a, a, a problem we've been trying to solve, um, to still make the building look and feel renovated and accessible, and we purchased it in twenty nineteen and top to, top to bottom, just um, renovated the entire property since it had been so um, under, under-maintained for better part of twenty years. And now that we've put all that time and money into the property, it's this consistent challenge for people to find the office when we send them the address for drop-offs, pick-ups, team members, interviews, any of these other things.
Again, I, I, I get, I, I. Again, I, I, I get, I, I appreciate your marketing issues and the, the locational issues, but we're, we have a requirement that says no signs on the roof. So anybody who has similar locational issues, because I'm going to put a sign on my roof too. I, yeah, I, is there, is there, it looks like there is a, there are different um, heights of the roof, different levels, and is there a location where the cat could be sitting above the, um, on the, on the lower portion of the roof and not the higher portion of the roof with a similar effect?
Yeah, I mean, we, we chose a spot there because it was secure and, and visible. Um, there, there's like a considerable amount of, uh, like decking and things of that nature, just because of the, the nature of this, like multiple angular insides of the roof, but you know, it could be, it could be seated back, um, instead of being almost of, like a foot down.
That's, I, I'm saying that I'm, I'm looking at the different roof lines and part of the problem is not extending above the roof line. So if it, if it were at the lower level, it would be less of a variance than being on the roof. I mean, I, I, again, we're, we're dealing with the regulations as they exist, so.
Sure. Yeah, it, it was only chosen because it was the flat location on the roof. Most of the roofs are, are, um, you can see that there, there's kind of these angular slanted locations, but yeah, I'm sure there's some other separate way that we could come to some other construction permitting equivalent to have the angular roof hold the statue separately or something.
All right. We're just exploring possibilities because like I said, we, we, um, we really, um, we, we've given a harder time to others who have come to request for forgiveness instead of permission. So, and we have required things to be removed when, um, the appropriate approvals haven't been requested. So we're, we're just trying to figure out what possible solutions could exist, so.
Yeah, I, I am too. I, I'm not trying to be, uh, kind of like adversarial.
I, I, I understand. I, I, neither am I. I'm just trying to understand like how we got here and what are the possibilities for resolving it? So, um, Ms. Burton-Paul, did you have any other questions?
No additional questions, Madam Chair.
Mr. Richardson?
No questions. Thank you.
Do we have anybody online who would like to comment with respect to this application?
Is, is it worth mentioning any of the, you know, we've, we had the conversations with the dam or with the Policial Civic Association or any of the community letters of support or any?
Well, we'll, we'll take that as part of the record. Um, I will say it, it, the, the organizations don't have the same responsibilities that the zoning board does. So we appreciate understanding that there's support, but we still have our responsibility under the code, so. Um, we have a hand raised from Claude Lavalé.
Hi, yes. Can you hear me?
We can. And do you, do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And, um, could you confirm your name or spell your name for the court reporter, please?
Sure. First name is Claude, C.L.A.U.D.E. Last name is Lavalé, L.A., capital V.A., double L, double E.
Thank you very much. And can you explain your position with respect to this application?
I'm a neighbor. I live across the street, uh, on the, from the backside of that building.
And what, what's your view? What, what, what comments would you like us to consider?
Okay, I have a few comments. Um, the placement of, this is just my opinion. I haven't like, uh, consulted with James or anything about this, but uh, we do live here, so we're aware of some things. Um, the placement of a sign on a roof means that it's not going to get graffitied. There is a lot of graffiti in this part of the neighborhood. Our garage area gets graffitied and our neighbor's garage and houses get graffiti, graffiti on a routine basis such that we have, we have to have developed, um, uh, kind of a response task force as neighbors to address graffiti, covering it up with like mosaic type paintings and stuff like that, but we have to do that very frequently. And if a sign was accessible to graffiti, uh, uh, people, then it would get ruined almost instantly. Um, the other thing is, uh, so if it was lower, you know, that, that would almost certainly happen. Um, the fact that it's high, uh, the, where it's located, you mentioned the roof just below, the roof just below it in front of the sign sign is slanted. So I'm not sure how you would secure a three dimensional, um, like sculptured sign up there. Where it is now is a flat surface, so it's more secure as far as, you know, attaching it. Um, so, so that would, you know, that's part of the reason why it's not on the lower roof. Uh, the other thing is putting it, if you were to put it, say, on, uh, the street level, um, where like James was saying, street level is either drivable or, um, it would be on the sidewalk. There's no like front lawn or anything to place that sign. And my last comment may not be relevant to coding, but I think it's relevant to, um, living here in the neighborhood and in Pittsburgh. I think that having a sign like that, that is really friendly and fun and cute and not very big, it's not visually obtrusive, um, could become a fun Pittsburgh landmark that people could say, oh, just turn right where the big cat is, you know, the mega cat is. Um, and it's fun.
Okay.
I'm for it.
All right. Well, thank you for, for expressing your support and, um, I'm not seeing any other hands raised, so, um,
Thank you.
Mr. Dane, do you have any other comments that you'd like to make and then we're going to close the record?
No, that, that's it. Thank you very much.
All right. And we will, we'll take into consideration everything that you've put in your slides and we will, um, issue a decision within the time permitted under the code.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you for being here this morning. All right. Uh, the next, um, case of the morning is zone case one oh four of twenty twenty-five for eighty-five ten Frankstown Avenue. Um, we have listed for attending, uh, Tom Swisher, Brian Almater, and Dennis Briggs. Okay, we got everybody?
I, uh, I believe so.
All right. And I'm going to ask you all if you swear or affirm that the information that you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
We do.
All right. Daniel, could you read the case in, please? And if you want to say that the variances as per the agenda?
I will. Um, this is on case one oh four of twenty twenty-five for eighty-five ten Frankstown Avenue. Uh, the application's, uh, for the change of use from a mechanic's garage to an unlisted commercial parking use for a transportation business. And they're requesting several variances which are listed on the agenda.
There are a number of variances requested that are on the agenda and there are a lot of landscaping and, uh, street trees and parking lot issues. So who is going to lead the presentation here and?
Yeah, I'm Tom Swisher with Feringham McCarty Gray. I'll lead the presentation.
Okay.
Ready to begin?
Can I, can I just confirm that the, um, variances, there's a use variance from in section nine eleven point oh two because the, um, mechanic's garage or the, I guess the commercial parking isn't permitted in the LNC district. And then there are a number of variances from section nine eighteen, which are the requirements for commercial parking areas. So tell us what's going on and, um, why, why you think these variances are necessary?
Sure. Um, actually, Dennis Briggs just logged on. I noticed he's actually the property owner and runs the, uh, transportation business and I don't believe he was sworn in, so he's probably going to have to say a few things.
Well, we'll, we'll get him in when he, but it, let's, let's move on. Thank you.
Very good. Um, yeah, thank you. Good morning. Uh, yeah, like I said, I'm Tom Swisher with Feringham McCarty Gray. Uh, Brian Almater of Feringham McCarty Gray is on, online as well and Dennis Briggs, as I said, is the, uh, property owner and the, runs the Deed Briggs Transportation at eighty-five ten Frankstown. Um, we did have a dam, uh, we did go to the Community Development Activities Meeting. It was on seven seventeen. It was very well attended. Uh, it was all support. There was no negative. And there is a letter of support here by Carrie Mosley, uh, from Pittsburgh City Council.
Okay. Well, we still don't know where the property is or what the issue is.
Okay, yep. So the placards were posted. Um, and then here's, here's, it shows the image here. We're on the edge of Pittsburgh, very near Penn Hills on Frankstown. Uh, we're in that little pink area, the LNC. Now you can scroll the next one, please. Uh, we're neibored by the RP, uh, zone and NDI to the south and then the oranges are, um, are R two L zoning districts and the, our two properties, which we do have an approved, uh, lot consolidation, which hasn't been finalized. Um, of these two lots, they're, um, it's shown there in red. That kind of just gives you a neighborhood perspective. Um, the orange lines show you where the edge of Pittsburgh and Penn Hills is and then the red is the two properties. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is basically showing, uh, pretty current existing conditions of the site. Uh, Frankstown is on the upper left. Madonna Street is on the upper edge of the lot and Breslin borders the property on the right side. Uh, then you can just kind of scroll. These are existing conditions, just kind of, we need them as reference when we're talking, showing the building up along Frankstown. There's two entrances that exist currently. Both enter onto, uh, Madonna Street. Those are shown in the photos. This also shows.
Can, can, I'm going to stop you for a second here. So, um, you're showing us existing conditions. Uh, it is, what are we changing to and from? I mean, there had been some use on the property. Is it a new use that's being proposed? Or is the newer use, um, one that's not reflected in a certificate of occupancy? Or is it truly a new use that you're changing from one to another and you haven't done it yet?
Um, basically what was there before was a transmission shop. Um, they used the building up front and the parking area up front to service the vehicles and such. The second lot, which is up behind it and, um, it is a, it was also used as vehicle storage for the transmission lot, so.
When you say transmission, I mean, was it service on transmissions, like automotive?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And, uh, they serviced vehicles and then they held vehicles and stored them in the rear lot, in the secondary lot. Um, so how the lots are being used isn't really changing right now. Uh, there was a lot of vehicles there previously on both lots. Um, the, um, the building uses that, there's not going to be any maintenance done on vehicles other than uh, fleet vehicle maintenance. Um, so.
But there, and, and I understand that Mr. Briggs is here and we'll, we'll get more of an understanding of what the use is, but is that actually happening now? Or is this a proposal to use this parcel for the transportation?
And it actually, um, per the staff report, it'll kind of give you a really good rundown on how this occurred. Um, uh, Briggs purchased the property, started using the property, switched it to transportation use. Um, and then basically, uh, the city said you don't have a occupancy permit.
Okay, but for how long has the use been going on? And now we're looking to get to the appropriate occupancy permit?
I, I can answer. I, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with my video, but are you?
No, we, we're, we're with you and, uh, Mr. Briggs, um, first of all, do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And now that we have a new voice into the, um, proceeding, we have a court reporter. Could you just identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Dennis Briggs, owner of DeBriggs Transport.
Thank you. And so I, I think you heard my question of, I, and we understand that you started using the property without understanding or getting the appropriate approvals for the change of use. But when did you purchase the property and how long have you been using it?
So full disclosure, my dad and I are, are part owners in the business fifty fifty. My dad is the one who, um, purchased the, the property and I was in, let me see, that was about four years ago. So that was twenty twenty-one.
Okay, I mean, about four years ago, but so it's been going on for a little while. And now we're getting to the, um, how it had been previously used, how you're using it. And we're just trying to confirm impacts of that change, how it's different from what had been there before. Maybe it's better than what had been there before, but we, we just need to understand what the changing impacts are.
Yeah, yeah. Is that, is that a question?
No, that, it's, it's, we're, we're going to get there, but, um, I, it, there, there, those, that's what we have in mind. So let's, let's keep working through the slide presentation and, and I'm sure we're going to get back to more questions.
Yeah, sure. Um, next slide, please, Daniel. Um, uh, next one. So this kind of, this is, uh, briefly shows the concept plan of basically how the, it's really showing what's, how it's being used now and how we, it would be continued to be used in the future. The front would maintain the building and the parking as is and the, um, it shows, uh, these were really, it was, the back lot was really a gravel lot previously and was still had vehicles there when they purchased the lot. Um, and they basically cleaned it up, took the scrub trees out and opened it up and basically kind of reopened the existing gravel lot that was on site previously. Next slide. Um, this is what was submitted. You can go to the next slide, please. This kind of shows here just graphically colors, so you can kind of comprehend and see it. The orange is the building. The front darker up along Frankstown is the existing paved parking. The lighter gray is the existing gravel lot and the green shows where there's green space on site. Next. So this gets down to the variances here. This lists the variances on the, um, left side of the, in the columns. We tried to color code them, kind of giving you uh, kind of like where it's affecting on the property. Um, so if you want to go to the next slide, we can discuss the first one. So basically change of use. Um, the biggest issue is there's no, there, they don't fit under any definition within any of the, um, uses. Um, and so the staff defined it as commercial parking. Um, we, we just wanted to kind of show that we don't want to steer off of the commercial parking is what we're talking about today, but I just wanted to kind of show that retail sales and services is permitted and we would actually kind of fit under that for size of the building and such. Uh, and we are a service. It's a service to the community, uh, you know, providing transportation for, um, you know, the neighborhood and, uh, and businesses and schools. Um, the transit facility would be conditional use and outdoor retail space is a special exception and like safety services, um, you know, is administrator exception. So it's not too far to stretch to.
I, I'm going to interrupt again, and this may be for Mr. Briggs. I don't really understand what the business does when you say transportation. Are you storing school buses and using them to dispatch? Or what, what, what does that mean?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, that's, that's correct. We transport about a hundred students, um, every year for the city of Pittsburgh and Propel Schools primarily. We also have a, um, small sliver of the business that is, um, ad hoc, um, small charters, um, for community organizations around the region. So primarily ninety percent of our business is student transportation, about ten percent is, um, ad hoc community transportation.
Right. So the types of vehicles that you are storing on this lot would be um, school buses and vans that are going out in the morning and coming back in the afternoon? I mean, that, that's, so it's, and any office use that you have is basically supporting the logistics around that?
That's, that's correct. For, uh, a couple of garage bays for vehicle maintenance and everything else is office, a, administrative office space.
Okay, so, um, and I, while we're on the subject, about how many employee, it, I'm assuming that you have people who are on site all the time in addition to drivers who are not on site all the time?
It's very limited. Um, sometimes our mechanics work, um, uh, uh, at an hourly schedule, but we, we keep that limited primarily is, is, we have about thirty-five staff right now as far as drivers are concerned and they, they're not on site all the time. They're in here in the morning and, and then back in the afternoon.
Okay. And do the drivers keep their cars on site or they get to the? Okay. And do the drivers keep their cars on site or they get to the, get to the facility and take the transportation vehicles out or how does that work?
Yes, if you picture it, the, the drivers come in, take, take our vehicle, park their vehicle in that exact same spot. And then, and then return their, you know, with, with our vehicle and take, take their vehicle. So the same spaces that we use for the, our, our business vehicles are parking spaces for the drivers.
Got it. Okay. Well, like I said, I was just trying to understand how that all worked.
Yes, all good questions. Um, so, and then this one, the, the way the site is, the way the existing building, the configuration of the roads, the topography, the back rear lot is quite a bit higher in elevation than the front lot. Just because of, it's basically due to the topography and the configuration of the lots and the streets, the roads around us. It really limits what could be done on this site and how to be, how to use this site. And since it was kind of a, a mechanic shop earlier, it kind of leaned itself towards this use very easily and very well and really not changing how the space functioned and how it was used previously. And we also kind of, the, the problem with the commercial parking is we don't really feel it's really a parking lot. It's not being used by the public. It's more of a storage space, you know.
Yeah, but there's still, it's onsite store, parking a vehicle. So for a commercial business. So I, I understand, we understand now, I think better what's the use is, but let's move on to how the, how you're proposing to design the space to limit the impacts that might not be consistent with the commercial parking requirements.
Sure. If we go to the next slide, please. This variance, I just kind of wanted, since we were talking about parking, I was going to stay on the parking issue. Per the LNC district, parking's not permitted in corner lots. It's, we're not, basically, we inherited the, the condition of the site and it was being used pretty much in the same facility, the same manner as we're proposing to use it and is being used currently.
Well, except that's a non-conforming. It's, the lot is the lot and it's on a corner. So.
Thank you. The next is parking must be screened under commercial parking. There's two issues on this one from the, per the staff review. The vinyl slats, the fences that surround the full both properties was already existing on site. And Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, but the slats were not there previously?
That, that's correct.
Okay, the slats were added, the vinyl slats were added to the fencing. It, you know, it screens the lots per what the city wants to be screened, but the vinyl slats aren't permitted. So what was discussed and things, we kind of were like the ver, the materials they were kind of suggesting to be used is pretty much the same type of material. We're trying to understand what the, we don't underst, I know it's just a rule. Sorry, I'm trying to.
We didn't make the rules.
Yep, yeah, I know. That's why I stopped myself. So it's just, you know, it, it was installed before anybody saw it was, you know, it was done before it was done and so.
Well, I'm, I'm more concerned about barbed wire. I mean, barbed wire isn't permitted anywhere in the city. So we've had, we've had even city uses, we've challenged the use of barbed wires. So I, I understand you're saying that it's identified in the occupancy permit, but is there, it's, is there an option other than barbed wire that could be considered?
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Dennis.
Yes, ma'am. So we, we're happy to comply. I'll just say that our, our, our facility has been robbed a number of times. That's the only reason that we see the barbed wire is, is a, is a, is a benefit to the facility, is a high traffic area, but we're happy to comply however we need to for another security option.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think there are other security options and, and like I said, we've, we've challenged the use of barbed wire elsewhere. So if, if you can think about that. Let's, let's move on with the other aspects of the parking that you're proposing.
Yeah, the, so the front lot is existing paved, the one along Frankstown, the, the rear lot is, was, was gravel when they purchased the property and still is gravel. It's pretty hard pack gravel and with hard pack slag being allowed. It's basically a gravel, you know, gravel like material that, and this is a very packed down gravel lot. It's been that way for years. So.
So that's another thing that's consistent with the prior use of the, of the lot?
Correct.
Okay.
The last two variances, parking lot plantings and street trees. Let me just talk about street trees real quick. So street trees are identified by staff. They were, they asked for street trees to be added along Madonna Street. With both entrances and exits on Madonna coming out of the lots. In the topography of Madonna, it's a pretty steep road. The sightlines, if we put trees out along the streets, it's going to kind of block the view looking uphill from both, for both driveways. We just feel it's a safety factor.
What's, what's on the opposite side of Madonna Street from the facility?
It's actually a, it's a high-rise housing. It's a, it's a lawn, big lawn with a sidewalk along it.
Is there, are there alternatives in terms of landscaping that could be considered that wouldn't be within the definition of a street tree?
Things could be explored, yeah, sure.
Again, we're, we're trying to think about the intent of the ordinance that requires street trees when there's parking. And I appreciate your concern about not having trees that would affect the driveways. But there's, the intent of having trees is to you know, not have just a pure open parking lot. So that's, that's something we'd like to, to think about.
Okay. And then the next is parking lot plantings. Basically, it requires trees per so many square feet and, and and basically spaces. Can you go back to slide thirteen, please? So the, the green is the gravel lot that we were just discussing. The, the landscaping that the city is requiring is just in this area, not in the front lot. And the orange kind of shows the areas of planting that would, that the city is looking for. So there, it would, it basically would minimize the amount of vehicles, you know, for their, their business that they could do. And like I said, it's the, this isn't a true parking lot. It's not being seen by the public. And topography already plays a, a good role in screening this lot. And the, he, they'd actually already planted, if you see the row of evergreen trees up along Breslin, as well as a few trees down along the parking lot at the bottom of the slope. And they also.
And, and again, the, the, the goal would be, we understand what the requirement is and is there a midway point between what the code actually requires and some improvements that would be inconsistent with the intent of that particular requirement? And you're saying that some trees have been planted. I mean, again, we're, we're not asking for a forest, but are there some planters or improvements or something that keeps this from being a pure parking lot with a residential area across the street?
I think, I think Mr. Briggs would be open to putting in a few trees and, you know, creating a couple islands, kind of like what we have shown within the orange areas.
Okay. And that's what I was going to ask about the orange areas that are there. Is that what you're suggesting could be workable for the site?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. I'll just say, we, we more than happy to, that my, my, I guess my main concern and it's, again, where our disposition is to comply with what's needed, but it's just about the, the flow of the, of the drivers coming in and out of the parking lot. Just maximize space, but preferably if I had it in my way, you know, we would plant trees. We have a number of trees surrounding the parking spaces. I guess my, the thing that becomes a little odd for me is trees in the middle of the parking spaces just for, for driver flow, but as far as you know, having greenery, we're more than happy, especially around the perimeters to add to, add to what we have right now.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that. Thank you for sharing that. All right. I think we've, we've been through all of the specific variances that have been requested. And do you, and you, you did have a community process. You said that the community was generally supportive. We have the letter from councilperson Mosley. Were there particular concerns that were raised in the course of those meetings that we should be aware of?
No.
Okay. And that, that generally this felt, you're taking over the use of what had previously been the automotive garage and your improvements from the perspective of everybody around has been supportive? I mean, it's better than what had been there?
Yes, and I, I'll, I'll say also that just for a quick context that initially we had issues with the community and it was around parking. It was around disorganization with our staff because we just had an extremely busy year and we didn't manage, you know, the number, the growth that we had well, and we had a lot of parking going on on the street. And we've since, you know, that would, that led to our first community meeting and, and we committed to the community to manage that a lot better. If you came by our lot now, you would see no, no parking across the street, no parking. And, and inappropriate places creating blockades or anything like that. So that, 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 if, if there were any community complaints, those, those were where they stemmed from. But since then, like the second meeting that we had was extremely positive, extremely supportive.
Well, it sounds like your, your solution of having drivers coming in and putting their vehicle in the spot of the vehicle that they're taking out seems like a good solution.
Yes, and that just requires a little bit of active management, which we've gotten better at over, over time. That's, that's what we plan to continue to do.
Okay. All right. I didn't have any other questions. Ms. Burton Falk or Ms. Richardson?
No additional questions, Madam Chair.
Do we have anybody else attending who would like to comment with respect to this application? You're here in the next one, right? We have people in the room. I'm just checking to make sure that they're, they don't want to comment. So and we don't have any hate. Sorry, Mr. Hallmeter, yes?
Yeah, one thing that was brought up, sorry, Brian Hallmeter with Feringer McCarty Gray as well. One thing that was brought up was something about the sign, Tom. Did we have to get that on the record as well? That wasn't listed. It was an add-on from my understanding, if we want to talk just briefly about that as well.
End of the slides. Yeah, this was like Brian was saying, this was added per staff. They said that this would have, had to come back. So they said, we might as well do this while we're here with this hearing. This was, there was an existing sign here. We already have a occupancy certificate for this poll. It was just a reface only and the, the picture on the right there shows what it had been changed to.
Okay. Yeah, that, it is helpful for us to understand that as well. So the, when you say it was a refacing, the, the sign face itself had been in place, you've just changed the text on it?
Yes.
What are the dimensions of that sign?
I don't have that. Do you know that, Mr. Briggs?
I am sorry, not offhand, but.
You could supplement the record with that information, but it would be helpful for us to identify it as a, with particular dimensions.
And.
Okay. But thank you for bringing that to our attention. We're still seeing no additional comments. So we are going to close the record with the exhibits that you've presented with the additional information about the area of the sign face. And thank you all for being here this morning.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. The next case of mourning is Zone Case one oh six of twenty twenty-five for twelve forty-one Western Avenue. Oh.
I'm gonna, I was gonna say, you're going to recuse on this one. Okay, please. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Ms. Burton Falk is noting that she's going to recuse on this matter. But we have an applicant team in the room. I'm going to ask you all, including counsel, to swear in. Do each of you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. And Daniel will read the case in.
This is case one oh six of twenty twenty-five for twelve forty-one Western Avenue. The application is for a sixteen stall commercial parking lot. They're requesting a variance from section nine oh seven dot oh three dot B. Commercial parking is not prohibited, is not permitted in the north side parking area overlay. And a variance from section nine eighteen dot oh two. A five-foot deep landscaping area is required and a four-foot deep landscaping area is proposed.
All ready then. So who's going to start this application?
My name is Brendan Lucas. I'm the attorney for the applicant. I have with me Theodore Terrace, who is the owner of the subject property. And Cameron Ash, who is an employee of Theo's. As, as Daniel said, this is a, a project that proposes to convert a vacant gravel lot in the north side to a sixteen space commercial parking lot for use on, for events at Accra Shore Stadium. We're requesting two variances. The first is a use variance to have commercial parking in the north shore, commercial parking overlay. As we'll show, the, 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 the site has been used with permission from the city for commercial parking dating back to the mid nineties. And then we're also asking for a small dimensional variance on the east side of the property to reduce the landscaping from a five-foot strip to a four-foot strip. And that comes in the context of bringing the, the, the lot up to all of the commercial parking lot standards in the code.
Well, and just for everybody, we do have a court reporter here. You can't see her. It's like Oz, but we just have to make sure that when we change voices that you understand, that can understand it. For the parking overlay, it's you're seeking a variance from the overlay, which is a specific prohibition on surface parking within a certain area, and I don't know the whole dimensions of the overlay district in the north side. So I, I'm assuming that that is not a, you, you don't view that as a outright prohibition from which no variance could ever be granted. But you're going to have to show us something unique about this parcel as to why it's okay to use this parcel for parking, whereas no other parcel in the overlay is to be used for parking. So.
That's correct.
Do you have any of the history of how the overlay came into being?
I don't, I, I, other than it was enacted, I, I, it was enacted in two thousand, so right around the time that PNC Park and Heinz Field were built. I, I imagine it was, you know, to ease parking concerns of, of that spilling into the, to the, to the residential community up, up on the north side.
Okay.
But we will get into that, the history of the property and, and the overlay. We actually have a, a slideshow in the overlay map and where our property is located.
Hooray. Educate us then.
Okay, next slide, please.
Thank you.
So this is, this is the site. You can see it's right on the, almost on the corner of Fulton and Western, right after the, the west, the West End Bridge off ramp. If you go forward two slides. We're located, this is an aerial view, just showing that the, the, the site is kind of sandwiched in between three commercial, or three, three industrial buildings. It's a very, a small and narrow lot. It's currently zoned. It's in, it's in the north side commercial parking overlay, but it's also in the, the underlying zoning district is the urban neighborhood commercial district where surface parking would be permitted absent the overlay.
The, the area itself was never associated with any of the commercial buildings, so it wasn't used for parking to support the uses within those structures?
I, I, Theo can talk to that more when we get into his testimony, but I believe it was occasionally used by that, the, the, that owner to park cars for employees on, or, or contractors when they're doing work on, on the building. But I don't believe it's ever been officially used as an accessory.
That was my. That was my question. Was it was it ever associated with any of?
Yeah, not, not officially, no.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
It's about 6,500 square feet and as you can see, it's currently gravel. Next photo, please. These next two photos are just looking at the ground level from the lot. There is a billboard also located on the lot. Next slide, please. You can see it there and then the.
Presumably, there's no interest in removing the billboard structure.
That's correct.
Just just confirming that.
Next slide, please. So as you can see, this shows the the north side overlay on the Pittsburgh zoning map. You can see that the yellow star there. Is the the subject property and we're located, you know, kind of right on the edge of that that parking overlay. Next slide, please. So we're proposing to bring the site up to all of the code's current paving and landscaping standards. There will be 16 spaces, eight compact and eight.
You're proposing 16 spaces. Okay, carry on.
One ADA space and three bicycle parking spaces as well. Landscaping will be installed on the eastern and southern boundaries of the property, and that's where we're asking for the one dimensional variances on. The eastern side of the property, that 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 row of landscaping is four feet instead of five feet where those bushes are shown.
And that's so that you can have the appropriate size parking spaces and drive aisle between?
That's correct.
And that's on that side, it's. One of the commercial buildings that you were talking about?
That's correct. And in terms of the operations, Mr. Terrace proposes to only use this for event parking on game, on game days or other events at Heinz Field or PNC Park. On event days, there'll be a flagger that will bring cars in and direct them to the first available open space in the back of the lot. So that there's an ACing on the roadway. And Mr. Terrace has also stated that he will prohibit tailgating during during event days.
Is this something that's been reviewed with the community group or?
Yes, we do. At the end of the presentation, we have a, we have letters of support from the RCO and from the neighboring property owners.
Well, it looks like Mr. Terrace is one of the neighboring property owners.
Alter Properties is, he owns an interest in that in that property, but he's not the the majority owner of that LLC.
Presumably, he could be persuasive about getting a support.
Perhaps, as long as he has a good relationship with his business partner.
There you go.
So next slide, please. Just getting in, sorry, next slide. Next slide. So getting into the history.
Can I just go back to operations? If it's intended only for event parking. I mean, how many days a year is that? And for the other days of the year? Again, there are other uses in around surrounding structures and it had been informally used for parking for employees or whatever. Is there an intent to chain it off and make it unavailable for anybody ever? On non-game days or non-event days?
I'd have to ask Mr. Terrace. Would you like him to respond?
Well, let's get to that at some point, but we can go through the presentation and get back to it.
Sure. So the last certificate of occupancy that was on file was for 92. And it did show a restaurant and accessory parking across the street. We don't know the exact history, but based on the aerial photos, next slide, please. It looks like the building must have burnt down. The next year, this is an aerial photo from 93. It's difficult to see what's on the property. But you can tell that it certainly doesn't look like it's a roof of like of any other existing commercial property in the area. Perhaps there's a tree there or perhaps it's a damaged structure. We do have testimony that it was, it did begin to be used as a parking area in the mid 90s. So it was around this time that we believe it was destroyed.
Okay.
Next slide, please. That's good. Stay there. So with that, I'd like to bring up Cameron Ash to provide some history of the property.
Okay.
Like, state your name for the record.
Cameron Ash, C A M E R O N, last name is Ash, A S H E.
And you're currently an employee of Terrace Parking, correct?
Yes, I am.
What's your job description generally?
I'm a parking attendant.
Okay, and you worked at the property before Mr. Terrace Parking acquired the property, correct?
Yes, I've worked there for a while. I've worked for Mike Mandel, he's doing Reinhold's Ice Cream Factory. I started working with him in 97.
And at that point, you started parking cars in this lot for for game day events?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and it's your understanding that Mr. Mandel was paying parking taxes and had a parking lot license during that time?
Yes.
Okay. And do you recall when Terrace Parking took over the lot?
I'm thinking like 2011.
Okay, and after that happened, you continued to to park cars there on on game days or event days for a number of years, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Then just going through the timeline here, 2000 was when the city implemented the north shore parking overlay. From 2011 to 2020, when Mr. Peter Terrace, who is the father of the applicant here today, purchased the property in 2011. Operated as an event day parking lot for 10 years.
So I'm just saying, there's a little bit of a discrepancy here. The parcel is in. The no parking overlay, but the city issued the parking lot license?
That's correct.
In 2011?
That's correct. If you take a look at exhibit five, it's a parking lot license for 1241 Western that states it was valid from 2011 until 2020.
Okay.
And then, so that kind of gets to the next point. And the, you know, the, we also, in exhibit six, we have included records of of Mr. Terrace paying parking tax for that lot for those years. Some of those years, we weren't able to obtain all the records for every year for the taxes Mr. Terrace's property burnt down not that long ago.
Okay, carry on.
Next slide, please. These are just, pronounced at the front pages of exhibit five and exhibit six that show the license. As well as the the receipt of parking tax payment for the year 2019. Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. So in November 2019, for whatever reason, the city issued a notice of violation that the parking use. Did not match the certificate of occupancy from 92. Despite the fact that Mr. Terrace had a parking lot license and paid parking taxes for the 10 previous years. Around that time, obviously, was the COVID-19 pandemic and Mr. Terrace, Theo Terrace's father. Became ill and passed away right around that time. So they began the process that we're that we're doing here today. To bring it up to code and get all the paperwork correct, but it was kind of dropped during the COVID years. And since then, there has, there has not been game day parking on the lot.
So the use isn't going on now unless informally somehow. But the idea would be to bring it up to code as you've identified and to, have you reapplied for a parking license?
We.
Go ahead. You'll have to identify yourself for the record.
You can.
Yeah, come on up.
Theodore Terrace, T E R I S. We had looked into it. We were encouraged actually to apply for it, but we weren't, there's no occupancy permit for it. And so for 23 years, the city accepted parking tax revenue. And then finally, when my dad got sick, they stopped it. And so, you know, when I took over the lot in 2024, I wanted to do things the right way. So that's why we're here.
You're starting the processing. Yeah, and it's it's a chicken and egg in the sense that you can't get the license without getting the appropriate use. The occupancy.
I was encouraged to use the already occupancy permit that's mine, that's for 1240.
Okay.
So that's where. Can't win.
It's a challenge. Yes. Okay, so we're, we're, we're trying to, and the. The question that I had earlier, since you're up here now. If it, if the intent is to use the lot only for event day parking. How do you secure it or what do you intend to do with it on other days?
I talked to Allegany Fence Company about putting electronic gate there. I imagine that's something I'd need a permit for, you know, right?
Not from us, but.
Yeah, that's a whole different process, but I would block it off. You know, currently our tenants in the other building don't have a use for, you know, money to provide parking. But to block it off for safety reasons would be smart because right now the U-Haul across the street uses it to dump furniture, not a lot.
Ah, so I mean, securing it would benefit you because it would prevent unauthorized use of the lot. Okay.
Right.
But the intent would be, you don't intend to lease spaces for non-game day to any of the surrounding?
No, not currently, unless there's a need for it, but currently it's just sitting there gravel and graffiti.
Thank you for that testimony.
I think we can just continue with Theo for for one more question. I'd just like to ask you, have you looked into other options for redeveloping the property into any other use other than parking?
Yeah, I talked to Brian Gaudia, Model Homes. He said it was not feasible to build anything there. I talked to Suncap Property Group about extending part of the warehouse over there. All of them said it was financially unfeasible. The irony of everything is whatever you build there, you would be left with four or five parking spaces. You would have to ask someone, a neighbor probably across the street for parking and pay them. So it's. You cannot win.
There is a catch 22 or something in there. All right. I didn't have any other questions. Did you have any questions?
No questions.
I just wanted to say that we're also, just in addition to this, the the traditional use variance standard, we are asserting a variance by a stopple in that we had a license from the city. The act we asked to the use, we paid taxes, just in the alternative.
Mr. Lucas, do you want to provide us a. Little bit of a legal memo on use bias, I mean, use variance by a stopple?
I can certainly do that.
That would be really helpful. We have one person who continues to attend. I just want to make sure. If the person attending would like to comment with respect to this application, we would be happy to hear from you. Just raise your hand if you'd like to be heard. And I am not seeing any hands raised, so thank you for your application. Thank you for your testimony. We will accept the exhibits as part of the record and we're going to close the hearings for today.
Would you like the memo?
You could just do something. I'm going to close out of the hearings. Thank you to the court reporter too, and we're, we're done for the day.